Welcome everybody, let's call this leading to order of the combined board finance and town council subcommittees on parks and recreation. We have an hour zoom time, so I think we need to be really prudent in how we utilize this time. I was just talking to John and I said, you know, most of these budgets from an operating standpoint are pretty straightforward. You know contractual additions, there are portions of utilities that are part of the greater, you know, overall town budgets. So what John's gonna do is just highlight for us what significant changes would be in either the parks or the recreation budgets. Okay, and then we'll spend most of our time on capital project, a little bit more imports or priorities setting perhaps.
Hi, John, good to see you by the way.
See you.
Thanks for making time for us.
No problem at all. I wasn't gonna put up my presentation unless, you know, because that's gonna even go in quick through, it's gonna take too much time. So I presume any pages you're looking at are what the finance department came up with.
Yes.
So if we started with the parks operational, this is where I'm not really sure if this is truly your purview or if it's the public works purview of parks, but it won't take us long to go through their operating.
So tell me what.
Okay, I think it should be page sixteen. So there's two major changes that we have any control in the parks operation budget and salaries overtime. We we ask for another twenty-five thousand dollars. The main, the most of that is for having a ma- that's, I'm sorry, that's under salaries overtime. So it should be upwards of top. That's that's twofold, two thousand of the twenty-five thousand is for normal contract changes where the guys get raises so our overtime goes up. But the main portion of it, the twenty-three thousand is for having one man come in early, seven days a week in during our peak seasons, so the spring and the fall season, it's not in the summer and not in the winter. So that we can pick up litter, empty the garbage at Dunn et cetera. It's what we plan on doing would be the two water tower fields, Dunn Stadium and Meat Park, especially around the playground and snack bar. So that's what we were hoping to do there. On outside services contractors, we went up ten thousand dollars in there and that's to start a different boost program than we have at Meat Park where we have the people coming every day. This is to just move the geese a little bit at both SASS and the high school. There's times that you go by and there's hundreds and hundreds of them. And they don't, they don't breed there, they don't live there, so it's just a matter of moving. We might move them up to the country club and then they'll try to move me back. But at least to make.
It's my backyard. Hire you, it'll sound easier than my backyard.
Yeah, so it's it's just, unfortunately, it's gotten worse. Those fields have gotten worse. We wouldn't be doing it this time of year since the fields are you know, yes, it'd be nice to have them gone all the year, but the cost will be faster now.
It's never gotten to a point where it is a public health disaster.
This is a tough one. Unfortunately, geese only eat grass. So overall, they're very clean birds. It's disgusting.
Right.
But it's not.
So they're not disease carriers, is that? Yes, it's not too messy, but not, not the rats.
Right, yeah.
Because I get asked that question by parents. You know, my kids are rolling around in it and is it not a public health disaster? And I said, yeah, it's, I'm sure it's monitored. And the health department would be all over it if it was.
Correct.
Right, okay, right.
So.
Just a nuisance.
It's a nuisance, it's disgusting. That's the main thing.
Agreed.
And then the only other thing that we went up, which is gonna sound bad, grass treatments, which is our fertilizer and a little bit of pesticides we use, we're going, we're projecting a ten percent increase. Which to me sounds awful, but then when we look at last year, we went up forty percent price increase on seed and seventeen fertilizer, so ten percent feels feels kind of nice. That's not changing any of our programs that we're doing with, we're basically staying.
And is this how it's like fertilizer is like it's a, like a, it's a petroleum, it was a.
Fertilizer is definitely high in petroleum.
Yeah, so.
We try and use a lot of organics, which the fertilizer is made with petroleum.
It wasn't, it wasn't a comment on green, it's just that the inflationary.
Yes. Yep, and and seeds still going up. There's been a speed shortage partially due to the weather. We think they're slowly coming out of it, but I don't know if they'll ever truly lower the prices down at what they should be. I'm sure they're thinking that it should be done. So other than that in parks, like the utility, like you know, the utilities are trying to be controlled. We don't even develop the numbers there, same with gasoline and oil. We have no changes otherwise in our meat park.
Hey, hey, John, can you go over, I just got, pulled out the budget. What line items are those three things you're highlighting? I see the grass treatments of the two hundred seventy-one thousand. What are the other two line items?
It's first of all, salaries overtime.
That's for which one? The guy that comes in early in the morning?
I said early in the morning.
Yeah.
And then the OS contractors is how it's labeled, it's outside services contractors. Because we would hire a company to come in for the geese control.
Okay, so outside contractors for the geese control. The salaries over, why is that overtime though? For the guy to come in? Early, why is it considered overtime?
Not on the outside services contractors, that's for the salaries overtime, salaries OT. So we had, we had one of our guys come in early.
Cause he's coming in before the work.
He's coming in before the workday and per their contract, they get paid overtime outside of their work hours.
Okay, so it's a guy ready on staff that you, that's extra time for him. Oh, okay.
Correct, yep.
Okay. And tell me again, what does he take care of early? Again?
What he's gonna do it would be Dunn Field, the two power fields. And then also Meat Park around snack bar mainly and the playground. But with time allowing, we'd send them up towards the tennis courts, et cetera around the park.
Okay, and nobody was doing that before?
We're trying to fit it in all the time during the regular workday. And unfortunately, we don't get there every day. And what we're seeing is that when we do, it's more than just a couple hours doing the job. It's, you know, it's taking us three hours and that type of thing. And we also can get it, get it done a lot better if we do it early in the morning.
Got it, okay.
So the third, so it's one, what line with OS contractor was the geese control, so what was the line item for the the grass?
It's right, it's right on here.
Oh no, sorry, my head asked.
Yeah, that would be OS grass treatments.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah. So it's overall, overall, you're asking for a three percent increase, right? Is that correct? Three point one seven?
Three point one seven, correct.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Good. So the next page, I think should be page eighteen. That would start the recreation. And the first one is civic activities. The the main thing there, there's two line items that have budget budget impact in there. Last year, we were able to take out some of the things like the program band concert, memorial day light and sound, because we have money in special projects accounts. Where we, we received donations for the band concerts and that, and that number's been going up. So for a number of years, we think we'll be able to use that money to pay for these things. But we want to leave the line items there because at some point in time, we probably didn't have to come back to the boards. But the first one, the outside services refuse. You can see a substantial increase going up two hundred percent, ten thousand dollars. That's for porta potties around the fields and in the parks. One thing that's happened, prices go up, but the main thing is we're required now to have handicapped accessible portable toilets. And it's like, it's like doubles the cost. It shouldn't double the cost, but it does, so. But these are used on the playing fields, et cetera. It's also the true cost of what we're repaying. For years, it came out of all different accounts here, there, everywhere. I don't know where Steve actually found some of the money for it, but yeah. So, so that's the true cost there. And then the the last thing is just supplies general. That's where we're able to take some money. We got to take some money, but we use money like for water, for the memorial day parade, that type of thing. So it's just general supplies for that, so there's no increase to that.
And then we get into all these little different categories. Wavine House, Paddle, Parks.
Well, we still have the regular rec administration. Now, very simply, the record administration that we removed a part-time person, so that's gone down. We used to need a part-time person to help with pool passes, et cetera, in the office. We don't think we're going to need to with the new software we have. Most people are doing all their registration on their own online. So we removed that position. And if for some reason we need somebody for a little bit of part-time, it's, we feel it should come out of the self-sustaining account, which we'll get to, where for, because it's directly related to our programs.
What's the big salary full-time forty-six thousand five ninety-one increase?
There is no, I believe that's all the the changeover of me moving over there and Zach, the assistant recreation director. When he was hired, we brought him in a little bit lower and he was, he had an increase in there, not forty-six thousand dollars by any means, but he had some increase in there, so.
So why, why would be such a big number in increase year to year, right? Cause wasn't like that's to replace Banco and Cap, right? So shouldn't that be an offset? We're not paying Banco and Cap.
You were actually, you're, you're paying me more than Steve.
Yeah, but is all your, and I know that, but is all your, did they move you a hundred percent over? So your salary's a hundred percent in rec?
They moved my salary a hundred percent over.
So you're saying that that's, the forty-six five ninety-one is not additional headcount, it's just increase in your comp and Zach's comp over Steve and Cap's comp?
And then just the other people in the department, their normal change in comp.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, if you look at the parks department budget and that includes the, you know, other raises where a point two percent there.
Right, right.
Where I think the adjustment came from.
Okay.
And so is that offset from whence you commented?
I think pretty much. I actually don't do many of the calculations for the salaries. So that all comes.
I have it all down.
Yeah.
It's all down upstairs.
Okay, so that, yeah, that's the biggest nut there, isn't it? Of the fifty-six thousand, forty-six is that piece. So that's the majority of the nine percent increase in rec.
Yep. That's it. I can find out more information for you.
I think that question's gonna come up, John, in in the board of finance meeting next week, so it'll be good for you to, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, that's the.
Will do.
I always like to get out of hand of what you think the questions are gonna be, so that you're not caught flat footed.
I agree with you.
Right.
I like that.
Yeah. What is this, what is this other forty, four oh one A employer contribution? That's something new, cause.
That, that is all new employees coming into town are not part of the pension plan. So that's the, like, the town's portion of the contribution.
Oh, that's for new employees, they're not part of the pension, so that's why, that's a new, okay. Got it. Okay, and then software is going up by forty-two percent?
Software. Software went up, it's main, you're, you're talking about the software line, not the.
The software line where it says thirteen five hundred this year versus nine thousand five hundred last year.
Yes, that is for the new software that we use, the MyRec software. It has, it has gone up in price, but the user portion of it is making it worthwhile, really worthwhile that that we switched over to this. Both the finance department can now deal with reports instead of re-entering everything by hand. So it's been, it's been a great help. And that's part of, switching the software is part of the reason why we were able to eliminate the part-time help in the office in the summers.
Is there like a deal we have so it doesn't keep, we're not their mercies, or is this, is this just increase because more users like? How do we make sure it's not going to be twenty thousand, thirty thousand, you know, years after?
It actually well increase the more we use it. It's based on how much money goes through the system. So far since, I'm trying to say it was March that we started, a million and three quarters has gone through the system. So, which is good then, that's, that's whenever anybody registers for a program or membership, that's how.
All right, so the more money we receive through registration, the more it goes up, the software.
Yes, but it, it's incremental, it's, and it's if we all of a sudden put down, go through two and a half million, you're not gonna see that number double, you're gonna see it go up.
Okay. That's fine, good.
So, Wavine House. You, you'll, you'll see on that one too, a lot of things have been moved over to the self-sustaining, which we'll, we'll get to. You know, most things, you know, like our outside services contractors. The, the board of selectmen or Deanna, however you want to look at it, reduce that number to twenty-three thousand increase, mainly because she wants us to evaluate a lot of our equipment and come up with a plan on what we should do with it, instead of just saying we gotta keep repairing stuff. We're fortunate to change out almost all the appliances at Meat Park, Snack Park. And that's gonna help us with our repair costs down there, so.
So in other words, lifecycle analysis of your equipment, which is what we've done with the buildings.
Which is, which is a nice thing to do, so, and the right thing to do.
Sure.
You know, you, you don't replace your fridge at your house if it's, if it's good quality, but if you say, okay, listen, this thing's getting old, I should replace it.
Yeah, right, right.
At a different level, so, yeah, so we're through all that at Wavine, we're gonna be going through all that at Wavine House, so that we know we we're doing the right thing.
Been around for a long time.
Some has been around for a long, long time.
The toilet range, you can't get parts from anymore.
Exactly.
Good.
So. So other than that, the main thing you'll see is there's some reductions. You know, we went down almost twenty-three percent there.
That's cause a lot went to the self-sustaining fund, is that where it went, you're saying?
A lot of it did go into self-sustaining fund. The other part that kind of switched out of there is when we work weddings, when we have a, a house manager on for a wedding, that now goes into the self-sustaining fund, because that's where the income's coming into. So his pay came out of it that way. A lot of the other stuff came out the year before, you know, the property repair, maintenance, that type of.
Yeah.
Yes. So is there any major reduction? Not a major reduction because of changing what we're doing, but a, a reduction because of where it's, where it's going, where it's being charged per se.
Okay.
Okay, paddle tennis.
Paddle tennis, okay, paddle tennis. Just as a note, the one thing we're noticing is pickleball has taken over.
Yes.
Yeah, and just as a sidebar with that, I was approached by some people that would like some pickleball courts up at Wavine Park, because we get a few noise complaints, but also so we could be actually able to light. And so we're looking at the area near the paddle courts, but that's a separate subject, but.
Is it, is it because you can't light up the courts at Mead? Is there a reason?
Right now, we're nervous about lighting up the courts at Mead. We have people playing at five-thirty in the morning and then we get noise complaints, so we have to start locking the courts. So, we have, we haven't, we haven't eliminated the, the desire to light the courts down there. But if we came up with a better solution, I think it would be best for everybody.
To do it at Wavine, because you're saying the neighbors aren't as close in Wavine, is that why?
Yeah, and very simply, I think we could, we could easily fill another four pickleball courts.
Right, for sure.
Yeah, I just, I, I see it. I see it becoming more popular instead of less popular, so.
Oh, it's crazy. It's, it's taken over the, the country.
We might believe some of the negative comments are getting to, that there's not enough open time. There are booked times.
That's, that's exactly it, you know, it's, it, with all our programs, it's a fine line on how many lessons. You know, per se, clinics, whatever you want to call them, we're, we're doing compared to how much open time, so then if you want to go play, you can just go play and get it, get on the floor, so. You know, sidebars, we're gonna be looking at doing some open time where you just can go down there and put your racket in and then when it, when it's time to play, you can just play.
Thanks. Good to see you.
Good to see you, sorry, my, uh, stare work.
I knew you had a, uh, scheduling conference. We're on page nineteen.
So so who runs your pickleball program now?
Steve, Steve, Steve O'Connor.
Okay. How's he doing?
Since this meeting is recorded and open to the public, I'd rather talk to you offline.
Uh, so where does there a Mead Park stuff expenses happen? I see Wavine House, I see paddle tennis, I don't see Mead Park expenses.
The, the main thing for a Mead Park expense that way, we don't feel that there's any direct expenses for the pickleball courts, if that's what you're talking about.
Pickleball and tennis.
The tennis itself is in the parks operational budget.
Okay.
Because we have to hire a contractor to come in to do the spring, spring service of the courts. And then we also bring them back in the summertime to do a touch-up with the playing, which has been really helpful.
So that's in the parks operation. What about that person that's at that, in that little house that takes checks, permits and all that?
That comes out of, now it comes out of the self-sustaining fund.
Okay, so that's our self-staining as well, okay.
The thing is, one, you know, there's somebody at the paddle tennis, that comes out of self-sustaining fund too.
All right, so there, that's why you don't have anything for Mead Park, because that's all covered elsewhere.
It's covered elsewhere, correct.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, so when you say you were looking into expanding pickleball courts over at the paddle tennis site, is, I didn't see that in a.
You did not see that in the budget, this came up after we submitted our budget. Then it was a preliminary meeting.
Okay, so if that is fourth coming, how's that gonna be funded, a, a special?
My rules for stuff going into the budget is it goes through the regular budget process.
Right.
And I've always been told, you can put it in five years out and let it work its way forward.
Right.
Sometimes different commissions, the park and rec commission pushed lightning detection system way forward, but right now, there's nothing in your budget, so we're a year away before you even see it anyplace.
But is the demand, is that current? Then I, it's up to you to justify a special appropriate.
We work with, with an outside group, right. We have them do a lot of the
Right.
the selling. And when I say an outside group, by me, residents who gain it.
Okay.
You know, the, the end users.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
And right we, right now, as far as pickleball's concerned, we, we see a tremendous use and we don't think it's going down. But we don't have enough data to really say.
Right, okay, all right.
So, John, you know, I study that data. The data is, is going incredibly across the nation, it's a craze, it's going across the nation. I think there's a huge moneymaker opportunity here for us with the self-staining fund. If you have more courts, you can charge people more money. You know, the indoor courts that people are paying is ridiculous. There's a sports house that, and there's initiation fee, there's a monthly fee, and then there's a court fee, which is almost like a country club membership and it's, it's full. And it's all, so I'm saying is if you do end up getting four more courts outdoors, you could charge permits, double the permit cost or whatever and charge court time. It, it's a, it's a huge opportunity for that self-sustaining fund to even more self-sustain if you have more pickleball courts.
Yeah, can I for a sec? I just wanted to say, um, this is Kim Norton from Town Council. Um, I actually think the, the courts potentially over at Wavine is a great idea, because right now when people are playing in the wintertime, there's no bathroom facilities, John, other than the porta potty, and I talked to Steve Dayton about that, and he said that's because you have to shut the pipes down in the bathrooms there, I guess, because they're not winterized, so that's a great thing. I, I, I've gotten feedback that people in general love the rec programs, because they're not hugely expensive, so although I know it's a revenue opportunity, Mike, which I, I think is really true, compared to like places like I won't mention the names of private places that you can play. It is great that the town can, you know, make it affordable for everyone in the town to play. John, is there a place in the budget for maintenance of the pickleball courts? Cause I was over there recently and court number two's got some, you know, the surface is kind of peeling off, and then there was an issue that some people were talking to me about the leaves being cleared, that in the wintertime, uh, sorry, in the fall. There was no like blowing of the courts to get the leaves out, so every, every time someone had to play, they had to clear the courts themselves.
Okay, we, we can work on doing a better job in the fall, that's for sure. We should have been down there all the time in the fall. As far as the, the dings and stuff, it's still covered under warranty. The, the company is coming back once the weather warms up again, we're probably gonna be having them strip court number two, I believe. Completely strip it down and repaint it. So as far as the other maintenance, like fence issues and stuff like that, we just, we fit that into our regular maintenance budget, mainly coming out of parks operation. You know, if we have a problem with fence, that type of stuff.
Yeah, the thing was fixed, and just so this is a minor thing, but the brushes, the brooms that you have to clean the courts, all of those were broken over the last season. And people do really use those to just, you know, sweep the course if they don't bring a leaf blower. That would be great to get some replacements of those.
Yeah, we're looking to have the attendant take care of doing a lot of that stuff too.
Okay, so if we could take those kinds of comments and put them off at this meeting, we are really tight on time, Kim.
Okay. Go ahead.
Be note to John, uh, so these are the issues that are, you know, organizing of pickleball.
Okay.
So park buildings, we're good to go. You'll, you'll see a decrease in salaries part-time, we removed it completely, just we, we, very simply, we switched our house manager, Wavine, everybody would know him as Butch, and now he's become kind of a town repairman. He's very talented on all those things. And Rich, who was the town's repairman, is now our custodian, basically. But as far as having the two thousand dollar part-time salaries, we don't know how it got in there in the first place. Back in twenty-four, and we're, we're not spending it, so that's why that's not, that's no longer there.
Good.
Other than that, the, the main driver is electricity.
Yep.
So.
Go Connecticut, right.
Go Connecticut. Latham Community Center, you there, there's, there's not huge changes in there. You know, the salaries, full-time are both Aggie and Kathy. Part-time salaries, we're, we're seeing a little bit more a little bit more use of our part-time teachers, that type of stuff, that's why we went up five thousand dollars there. Overtime, very small increase, and that's mainly Kathy does get overtime if she works later. But the one thing of note with the Latham Center, we, we have received a grant from the state. None of our budget numbers show the grant, because that's completely separate. With the grant, we'll be doing extra programs and hiring people to do them, but it does not affect our budget, and we're not looking to hire any permanent employees, so if the grant ends and we decide that it's not, it hasn't worked, we don't have any budget implication, and if it did work, if we come back. we don't have any budget implication. And if it did work and we come back, we, we will be coming back for programs.
What is it for? What is the program?
It, it mainly comes back from COVID money, so to speak. The state's trying to give towns, um,
Do they, but how do you find it to our program? They might be doing a Saturday program or evening program.
Saturdays and some evenings, that type of stuff is the name there. But it doesn't affect the budget today or long term, right?
Kwanis Park.
Kwanis Park. Very simply, you can, and Kwanis, uh, last year we had some major increases, so.
Uh-huh.
Uh, now, the, the main thing, uh, the part-time is the lifeguards. Minimum wage went up again, so that's the main driver there. So.
And, and that went up too, yeah, because they're such a short slit, they're, they're so in demand and they're so, right?
Lifeguards?
Yeah.
No, well, actually, our minimum wa, uh, minimum wage went up again, I think it was January first or.
Right.
So that's why we're looking at an increase.
We all good on uh?
Like, which way would you like to go?
Yeah, the self-sustaining fund would be great.
I think it's gonna be at page twenty-nine.
Can I ask one quick question? Someone brought this up to me, just out of curiosity, the, the permits to swim at Waveney Pool, uh, when was the last time there was a big increase in that? Uh, is that, is, okay, is that?
Um, it, it came up in our selectments budget meeting, that the kind of feeling is we should raise it, but they already had our fees done that way. So as of now, we're not raising. I think we need to go back to the board of selectmen if that was decided. We're, you know, the bonds paid off, so that helps at the pool. But with that said, we're kind of on the wrong side. We're, we're, we, last year we spent a lot of money, had a lot of upgrades at the twenty-year mark. We don't see any big capital projects this year.
But you gotta start making that a little fun for when the pool decides to go.
Right. And, and right now, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at the, uh, the depths around the pool.
Uh-huh.
You know, so that's gonna be, it's, it's unfortunately, it's not gonna be cheap projects.
Right.
But.
Okay, page twenty-nine, recreation funds, right?
Yeah. Yep. So, very simply, when, when we split the money out of the operating budget, we set up nine sections. So there's before and after-school programs, B, BASF, there's, there's camp, there's soccer and fitness, they're together, uh, flag football, softball, tennis, paddle tennis, pickleball, and then special events. So, since they're separated out, you'll, you could see on there projected income and, you know, our projected expenses. If this was all sitting in the budget, you'd say, wow, that's a big, huge increase, but almost all of our programs, and the reason I say almost all of our programs are cash positive, uh, every now and then, for one reason or another, we might find a program where we didn't meet the minimum number of kids if it's a before and after-school program, but it's the exception, not the rule. Right, if we still feel it's a good program to run, we will run it.
Right.
So, uh, I can go down through all of them.
But where's the revenue? Where's the expense? How do I read this?
So if, if you go down like the first one, BASF, the school programs, the program connectivity number is the revenue, the projected revenue.
Okay.
And then, then the four items down below there are the expense side of it.
Okay, so your net number, you don't have a net number there, but your net number is about two thousand on that?
In that case, yes, yep.
And what about the general? There's, that's just an expense?
Jen, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Uh, the first one, the top.
Oh, the Jen?
Yeah, the hundred forty thousand.
That's banking.
That's the banking and everything, and that's an expense. One thing that's in the budget, and I don't have their sheet in front of me, but there should be a hundred thousand dollars being transferred over to the town.
It, it's in the budget.
Okay. What that is, is with all, with what, what we've done over the last year, we're, we're feeling that we can give a hundred thousand dollars back to cover some of the other expenses, things like my salary, which aren't included in there. But they should, part of that expense should be offset by this, you know. As much as we'd love to have this huge number, all of a sudden have a million dollars there, it's not there to be spent that way. So that's why, uh, talking with Ian.
That's a, that's a transfer out. So on the, on the general fund or on the town fund, we should see a revenue of a hundred thousand somewhere that offsets this expense, is that correct?
That's correct, but I'm not sure where Ian booked that to, that's all.
Okay, so we just gotta check that Ian booked it somewhere. That's not, alright.
I'll, we'll find out by Tuesday.
Okay, great.
I don't understand where the revenue is. Michael, you asked that question, but if I look at BAS.
Under programming activities, that's, programs and activities is where the revenue number is.
So that's two eighty?
Yeah, that's two eighty.
So that's, okay, thank you.
Yep, got you.
You know, I'd be glad to go through any of them, um, any specific questions about any of them.
So you're positive, you're cash positive, I'm looking on everything, which is great.
Yes, yes, we, we foresee that, you know, uh, very simply, our fall event, we, we barely were cash positive, I mean, within pennies. But, um, you know, it's the first time we held it, so we're, 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 we're feeling, we're feeling good. Most of the time, if we, if we're holding a program of anything, if it's um, physical fitness, you know, we know what we need for a minimal number of people to make it, to make it profitable. Sounds like we're in business, but we don't want to pay an instructor for two people. Also, if it's not a popular program, we should evaluate and find a different program. So.
So you like the way the fund is working, right? John, looks like it's working well?
I like the way the fund's working. You know where it really benefited? Uh, we just had our father-daughter dance last weekend, and it sold out in like ten minutes. Because we're limited on how many people we can have in Waveney House. We were able to add second seating per se. So, you know, that wouldn't have been able to happen in the past because we wouldn't have had the money appropriated and everything. So.
Yeah.
That's a positive, positive cash flow program too. So it's not like it costs the town people, when people want it. We, we held that event the same night that the country club held one.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, right? If there's more demand for programs, people willing to pay for it, why not, right? It shouldn't be an incremental expense. That's why from the Board of Finance, I think this is a great thing to encourage more programs by having this fund rather than your expense budget blowing up, right? Even though your revenue goes up, but then you looked at it, you can't blow your expense budget, right?
Yes, so far it's been working, it's been working wonderfully. Good.
Yeah.
Prices at a level that is affordable to the population, we're not pricing ourselves out of.
Definitely not pricing ourselves out. We're, you know, like our summer camps is still the best, best buy around, and you drastically change what our summer camps are.
Perfect.
You know, we've gone, we're going to go one hundred and twenty kids next year for three sessions. And we foresee, we, we could probably have more than that. Our problem is our inclement weather space.
Right.
That, that's our biggest problem in our summer camps, having five hundred kids, but, so.
The, the, the only, the only concern I would have, which may not be a concern, but was brought up earlier, is that to not do too much programming where you're doing clinics and too many clinics, right, for paddle or pickleball, where it's taking away free time for people to play, right? Like, you can make a lot of money on clinics and lessons, but it's taking away free time, then that would be the only negative I can see with something like this, John.
Completely agree with you on all of them, you know. We, we feel we probably could have a lot more tennis lessons, a lot more pickleball lessons. But if you can't go play, why do you want to go to a clinic then too? So, it, it's fine. And I think over the years, we'll, all of a sudden we'll have more clinics and then we'll say that's too much, we need to cut. I, I, I kind of feel since pickleball's still new to people, we need to have some clinics to bring them up. But then at some point in time, it's gonna be okay, we need to cut back. We don't need this third one.
Right. That would be the other thing I would say is what, that instructors need to have guidelines, otherwise they'll have clinics all day long, alright, all day.
But we, we run all their programs. So we say, here's the courts, go do what you want.
Oh, okay, good.
Yes.
So you can.
We did it that, you know, so they, we just had tennis come in for next year. And we asked them for all their programs, you know, what, what do you want to run? Then we evaluated. We can look back and see what we've done. Well, kids thirteen and fourteen don't want to play tennis, and I'm just picking that out of the air. So we're gonna, we're not gonna run that program.
Got it. Alright, so you oversee, that's good, right?
We have that.
Yeah, uh, John, are you able to analyze the court reserve system for utilization of the pickleball courts? Or, I mean, the tennis courts are on that system and I think the paddle courts are as well, but can you, uh, have you looked at those numbers to see, you know, what utilization is?
We're using it on pickleball too, and I don't have the numbers with me, but yes, it, it works out well.
Alright, um, um.
The only other self-sustaining part is the weddings.
That's down, right.
Yeah, and so that, the same thing, where we see, where we took out, that should be page thirty-one, I'm sorry. Uh, where we've taken money out of, uh, out of the operating budget per se, it's a good, part of the self-sustaining fund is a separate section for weddings.
Everybody just living together and not getting married, is that the deal?
Is that the law of A two yet?
That, I see as part of the problem. Uh, I know that's in your capitals.
Right.
Pretty quiet.
Alright, um.
You want?
This is really, really tight.
Yeah.
It's only giving us an hour here.
Um, very simply about the pool.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't know what page that's on, sorry. Uh,
I don't even know.
No major changes, just a little bit in labor, um, due to the minimum wage.
I don't know that we're gonna be able to get through courts if we have, what, what do you have? Um, meaning your stuff as far as capital projects for recreation? That's a page hundred and seventy-five, right?
So are you talking about the park infrastructure?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think you're gonna hear this all through public works too, because that actually is done that way. Uh, there is a lot of projects in there.
There's a lot of, I was looking through them last night and I thought, ooh, oh.
Yes, uh, I can run down some quickly.
You know, I was gonna say, um, what, we just went through infrastructure and there was a very clear message of, look at all these projects and do a priority, um, in your own minds, it was where you go, because what do we have? Um, millions of capital projects and, um, they're all not gonna fly this budget.
Yep.
So, we've really, we've really got to do the ones that are the most critical and, and, you know, justify why they are critical.
Right. Um, because there's two big drivers in this five and a half million dollar request, and that is the, the continued work at, done in the field. And I have to have Tiger talk about that. Um, and then, uh, the project of Kapo baseball field.
Uh-huh.
Now, those are, you know, Kapo baseball field, in my numbers here is two and a half million, but I, I want to assert that it could be a request of two point seven.
Right.
So, uh.
Wow, yeah.
Exactly.
What, what, what is it? What's the two-seven cover for Kapo?
That would be, if, two-five to two-seven, again, Tiger should really be talking about it because he's been doing all the numbers. That would be basically half of the cost to build a turf baseball field at Kapo Field, which is, Kapo Field's the baseball field, uh, community center.
Uh, wow, two and a half million for half the cost?
Half the cost.
And is, is that turf field is part of it stadium seating too, or is it just the?
Uh, the stadium seating's pulled out with, along with the press box and the bathrooms and everything else. So there'd be some bleachers there, but it would be more than anything at turf fields.
How much is the athletic foundation? Have they pledged a certain amount to this yet?
Well, right now, that, I, that I don't know for sure, but the, the two and a half to two point seven is half the cost of the project. So, the, the only other advice would be, I think, would be coming from that athletic foundation.
And the, and the issue is drainage, is that?
Drainage is one of the big factors. When, when Kapo was built, now probably thirty-five years ago, there was a lot of pushed up soils. So the outfield is, is, doesn't drain, that's correct. And when you put in a turf field, you need to retain all the water so it doesn't flow offsite when it rains, then it seeps back into the soil over time. Especially if you look down towards one oh six and Jell-O Mill, all that water is eventually going that way. So huge retention basins would need to be installed.
And can I ask another question, interestingly, is that primarily used varsity baseball, or are there little league, what, like what is the?
If this, if this was built, this would become the varsity home baseball field.
And, and if you were more than that, or just?
Well, it would be, if, oh, yes, it would be used for JV freshman practices, um, that type of stuff. But right now, varsity plays at mead park. So part of it is having the desire to have, um, the varsity team be able to play on the campus per se, even though it is Waveney Park and not part of the high school. You know, it'll still be there, so.
Is, is mead park, like, obviously it's the correct size, they have all their varsity games there? Is there any other issue with the varsity playing at mead park other than the fact that it's not on the campus?
Um, one of the concerns is a, they're very large, beautiful tree in center field that will get hit by balls, um, down the, um, first baseline, there's trees that encroach on play there. Um, other than that, I, I personally like baseball down mead park. I think it's a nice little place, but it's a hard place to watch games just because there's not a lot of room and it's only along the first baseline, that type of thing.
Are both of those fields regulation for varsity? There's two baseball fields at mead. Are they both able to be used by varsity?
No, the, the, only the big field per se, the first one on the left as you come into the park is a ninety-foot base field, varsity field. The two other fields down there are little league fields.
There's twelve and under, yeah, for the other one.
So, um, we have two other varsity-sized baseball fields, one at Con, um, Connor Field, and then of course, Kapo Field is a varsity baseball field right now.
So is that, is that a must-have?
And Stacks Middle School, is that usable by the varsity?
No, that's too small.
I see.
So is this a must-have that we have to Kapo since there is mead park and the only downside is you gotta travel a little bit and it hits a tree? I know some of the tree people obviously are concerned about that, but is that a must-have this year?
I don't know how to answer your question, honestly. Um, is it a must-have? I, I've heard anything from some of the donors that would give money to that field, um, their kids are only gonna be around so long, so they might not be around. Uh, but I, I don't have any facts on that. This is just commentary, so I don't know.
What about, tell me about Dun, Dunning. What is the two million for exactly for Dunning?
I'm gonna have to have you talk to Tiger, but that was part of the whole big project that included, um, there's, there's, uh, of course, right now, the, the donor wall's up, but then the new entrance and the press box, um, that's being delayed a little bit.
Press box and concession area.
Then there was concession stands and bathrooms and a storage building and it it's, and even some changes in the parking lot. And that's why I'm not exactly sure what that two million is.
Done. It sounds like, I don't know enough about, but it sounds like if we had to do, the priority would be Dunning first because it's al, already half there, right? We gotta finish it off. Versus there is a solution right now for Kapo, right? But the issue was the donors, right?
Right now, I have three baseball fields.
Right.
When, if they did, if this project was done at Kapo Field, we still have three full-size baseball fields, just.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, that, that's helpful to know. But yeah, that'll be, I would love to hear from Tiger on the Board of Finance meeting next week about this.
Yeah, park and rec go, or recreation goes first and then Tiger's right after that.
Okay, great.
So I'm, I'm sorry, th, this is James, uh, sorry for being late. So is the, um, so is the, I, I guess we can't use match anymore, but is the contribution from donors, this also on a fifty-fifty basis for both baseball and football, or would both fields, or is one where the, the town would have to kick in a little more?
I don't, honestly, no. I think that'd be a better question for Tiger. Um, I think it's fifty-fifty. You know, on, on Kapo Field, the way, the way meetings that I've sat in for that, it, it, that's, that's why I'm saying two and a half to two point seven million. Is that half of the price.
Yeah, because that's, I think that's a larger number than I recall. For Dunning, I, I, I believe that that five is for the full project. I, I think the, the opponent stands are going to be held off to a second phase or something. So I'm not sure if that's been included as well.
Okay, and we'll, we'll find out more from Tiger then, thank you.
Good. So, uh, in your infrastructure section here, are things that are, you have water fountains and other field improvements and irrigations and. All normal life cycle.
A lot of them are normal, one that's, it, it's there is the lightning detection system. It's time to replace it, so we have a quality system, so, um. I think we're, we're gonna be at the 10 year mark when we be replacing this, which will probably, if it's approved, will be next winter. So they're gonna be ready for the spring season. We're, we're finding more and more, um, breakdowns, the sensors itself are at the end of their life expectancy. And so we're gonna have, we have to switch those out no matter what. It's time.
Well, you've got all these things, we've got all these life cycle issues, so.
What's, what's the exterior wall reconstruction? Which wall is that?
And those are the walls at Wavine. So e- either walls right by the house itself or the stone walls, like they did a substantial amount of work on the stone walls on Lapham Road. So that's, that's what that is.
Okay, and then the Wavine Park Conservancy, is that just, what is that going to, 300,000?
That goes to whatever project that, that they're bringing forward, that's the town's contribution towards that project.
Okay. So that's just an allocation for them.
Yes, I like. Yeah, how, how was that amount derived?
Way that amount was derived is a few years ago, when the Athletic Foundation was receiving 300,000 dollars a year. They came forward and said, we'd like some help too, and that's when the number went to 300,000 and next word, that.
But it's sort of, it's a sentence down, it's.
It, well, I, I don't think anything's set in stone, but it has been the 300,000 dollars. Um, and, and before, that's what the Athletic Foundation would have, would have been 300,000 with no particular project. But now that there's a couple of projects there, the 300,000 isn't there. So, the, the other, the other one of note, the nature center pond dredging. Unfortunately, if we don't dredge the pond, we're gonna lose the pond to wetlands and it won't be, it will be a pond anymore. We're getting to that point, so that's been taken out over the years.
Is that pond in the back, John, that's very green and full of algae?
Yep. Yep, that's it.
Uh, 350 to me seems low. I just had my mind priced and it was a multiple of that.
Yes, uh, the big, the big cost savings is they're probably gonna take all the spoils aside.
Well, I, yes, okay, a- and yes, that is a significant part of the. Alright.
The only other thing of note is, it would have been in this year, if we put in an additional path port. And also a picnic area there, we pushed that out at this point in time because paddle tennis has been down.
Nice, right.
You know, so we, we, I, I don't feel I could justify it, I can, if I can't argue for it, I don't want to argue for something. And not this year, so we only pushed it out one year, but we'll go from there.
Well, that's, that's smart, yeah. We, right. We have five minutes to do your parks.
Okay, the parks equipment?
Yeah. They're gonna have kind of socks that I thought.
Okay, that's fine, um, so parks equipment, very good. It, it's the normal maintenance of equipment used for the park maintenance in town. So there's a truck in there.
Boys and their toys, it's a gift.
I hate when people call, because sometimes they say, these are John's toys, they haven't been in Lottoway much, no.
Okay, so it's, so it's vehicles, some lawnmowers or?
It's vehicles, lawnmowers, etc. You know, it, it, the stuff that's been in the five year plan, we keep an inventory of all our equipment. We, we check its life cycles, yes, sometimes things last longer and sometimes they last less. And kind of bring it forward, but we work kind of, even though it doesn't show up here, we work kind of on a 10 year plan. Because most of our stuff will last 10 years or more, so.
Okay, so when you do prioritization of your projects, um, you will be keeping that in mind, is that? What's about to die, you know, and it's going to more to repair it and replace it?
It's exactly it.
Right.
And, and, you know, with the parks equipment, if we could have six of one thing, it'd be great. Uh, because you'd always have a backup, but we don't have backups on everything. So sometimes when they get to that point where there is more maintenance downtime.
Doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense, exactly.
Alright, so we haven't really had any time to go through the parks operations, but, um.
As far as the parks operation budget, we, we only had those two major changes that we talked about in the beginning.
That was it.
That's it, you know, so.
So we have done it.
Yeah, we did it, we, that was the first thing we did.
Right.
We got everything done Penny in an hour, believe it or not.
She was not watch.
Exactly.
Well, if, if you say the budget before you come into a budget discussion, it kind of helps and know what you need to focus on, so.
Yeah, no, this is good, this is good, I, but, but I, like I said, anything, I know it came up after the budget, but we talked about it, anything you can do to. Kind of put that, those pickleball courts in earlier for Wavine, I think it'll be helped a lot, like. Kim and everybody else is, having the bathrooms is a big deal, so.
And I have said, I just second that, I have been hearing from friends, people like, I want to start new pickleball, where can I start? You know, and, and I know about sports halls and I'm like, I'm not gonna send them down there, it's far away and prices, you know, so.
Exactly, if they, if they don't know, I send them to, um, have a, have a clinic.
Yeah.
You know, good place for friends that they can play with and go from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the five courts are gonna be way overpacked next year, I guarantee you that, that, that's what I'm saying. We should get ahead of it.
Under your point, I think we need to come up with a business plan per se.
Yeah, yeah.
Justify having the courts instead of just saying, we want four more courts.
Yeah, we should have a plan, I, I think the plan will work out very well, because people will be wrong. There'll be high demand for it, so.
Good.
Great, well, great job, uh, John, thank you so much, uh, I'm, I'm, appreciate your time on this.
Oh, no problem, anytime.
Good.
Alright.
Click us out?
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, thank you everyone, thank you John, Penny and Jen, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, all of you.
I would like to, um, close the meeting, send it, send it.
I, 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 uh, support it.
Alright, good, good.
Thank you.
You turn me into a sticker for the speaker.